You're good.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm gonna let everyone in the meeting.
Yep, and I'm gonna disable that waiting room, and you will not have to worry about that anymore.
All right, thank you. All right, it is March 25th, 2021. Welcome to the Planning Board. Those of you that would like to participate, it has to be done by remote access only. And you can find that on the Planning Board's website. So that said, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean? Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor. And just a side note, Rebecca Lewis will be joining us later this evening. So she will probably miss the first two items on the agenda this evening. So Bob McLean will be voting.
All right, Bob, can you just unmute yourself?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't want you to hear my daughter crying in the background. It's bedtime, so.
All right, so item number one is a public hearing special permit accessory dwelling for 129 Stockbridge Road. Assessor's map block lot 54-1-41, applicant owner Kyle and Eunice Zakari. Okay, and so this is the public notice. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 11, with the Situate zoning by law, Section 530, accessory dwelling special permit, and Section 940 referrals, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Thursday, March 25th, 2021, in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Situate Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner Kyle and Eunice Zakari for an accessory dwelling special permit within a newly constructed detached structure at property located at 129 Stockbridge Road Situate. Property is as shown on assessor's map, block parcel 54-1-41. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office. Town Hall Situate by appointment only. Participation in the public hearing for butters and other interested parties will be via remote access only. Please call the Planning Board Office at 781-545-8730 for additional information. Okay, so who is making the presentation, please, on 129 Stockbridge Road?
Tracy Sharkey, Guaranteed Builders, 14 West Street, Douglas, Massachusetts.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. We are proposing the accessory dwelling of 1,045 square feet on the property. And there is a question about the gross square footage, but we intend to meet the requirements of the board with the 40% of the existing dwelling. I'm here to answer any questions. We did get feedback from the Water Department, and we will meet their requirements for connection.
Okay, you also received the feedback from the Sewer Department as well?
Yes.
Now, how did you come up with your 40%? What are you using as your gross square footage, please?
In addition to the assessor's card, there is square footage in the basement, a laundry room, and a gym, as well as square footage above the existing bump out that has not been included from the assessor. We did reach out to the assessor, they said they would confirm those square footages after the construction.
Is the basement a walkout basement?
No.
Is it a finished basement?
It's partially finished with a gym and a laundry area.
Okay, and the attic, is that finished?
No, it is not.
Okay, well, as it stands right now, we cannot include that, the attic and the basement, as part of your 3,000 square feet. As far as we're concerned, or I am concerned, it's a 2,106 square foot dwelling. Therefore, 40% of that is about 800 square feet. So I think what...
Continue, sorry.
All right, basically, what you're looking to do is to bring in, as far as I can see and I have looked at the property, is basically the size of another house on one lot. And I, for one, have some trouble with that. And so, that said, I'll turn it over to Karen for her comments, and then the board. Thank you.
So I sent you pictures of what the basement, the gym area, looks like, and what this attic looks like. And I have talked to the assessors, and the assessor has offered to go out to the home and to measure to confirm the square footage. But I showed the pictures to the assessors, and the assessors did not believe that that was floor area. And the assessor was last out there, not that long ago. And, but he is, he had offered to go out. I relayed that to the applicant, or to Ms. Sharkey, and I, the assessor's never heard from her.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to the board. Bob, would you like...
Chairwoman, could I clarify? The owners did reach out to the assessors, and I have an email that they said that they would go out after the construction.
That does not, no, that can't, it has to be...
It's gotta be before.
Before construction. All right, Bob, would you like to comment, please?
I have nothing for the group on this.
All right, thank you. Stephen?
I tend to agree with you. I think, I think we should use the same measure of square foot that we've used for all other accessory dwellings. And that becomes the benchmark, to the extent that you wanna reassess it or have the assessor look at it. It's not good enough to have the assessor do it after the fact, because we're not, we're not gonna change the size of the dwelling if the number comes in different or something. So now is the time to get it squared away and use the right square footage, and then pose a, you know, an accessory dwelling that meets the zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Patty?
I concur.
Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the zoning bylaw, really, there isn't, there really shouldn't be much question. I mean, we have a definition of gross floor area in our, in our zoning bylaw, which clearly states that attics or cellars not intended for human, or not used for human occupancy are not supposed to be included in that area. So I think that's pretty standard. And then, if I'm not mistaken, for, for those areas, I think there's also a technical definition in perhaps the Situate zoning bylaw, but also in the building code, about what constitutes a habitable or usable space for human occupancy. So I think that the assessor, or maybe the building inspector, needs to make a determination on that. And then, I mean, I, I as a board member, won't really feel comfortable until that's been, I guess, technically evaluated, so.
I think it's standard, Ben, that we basically hold everybody up to. So we should, we should stick with that standard and get it, get it, get it right. And then they'll be able, you know, we're not opposed to a proposal for an accessory dwelling, but it just has to meet the requirements.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so is there anything else from the board at this moment? Okay.
I would just like to add that it's also, the site is also in the Water Resource Protection District. And so there needs to be some attempt to infiltrate the water from any proposed roof to recharge it to the ground, because it is in the Water Resource Protection District.
Yeah, good point.
All right, so Ms. Sharkey, I have to tell you, we have two choices here. We can just deny this outright, because it does not meet our criteria. Or, or, we can continue this until such time as the applicants can meet with the Building Department, with the assessors, and then come up with a far better plan than what you are putting forward at this time. So there's a choice that needs to be made here.
Yeah, just for clarity, you mentioned under, as Benjamin said, gross floor area, human occupancy is not defined in the building code, so habitable space is. So that was the tricky part, because you can, I mean, there's laundry area in the basement, there's a gym in the basement. I understand how they're determining that. And also in 2012, they, the same property received a decision that had a condition where they were adding in addition on to the home to meet the 40%. So I would say that the applicant will meet the 40%. It's just whether or not the basement qualifies for human occupancy, which is not a definition in the building code. And it's just the way that it's written. I understand the board has some idea of what qualifies and what does not. So we would be willing to meet, yes, that 40%, and also propose some diffuser pits or drywells to catch the runoff from the roof for that. So I would, I would say I can continue. I would request the board to continue the hearing if they're not comfortable with making a decision conditional on the 40%, the 40% square footage number.
The plans actually have to show what's, what the area is. It has to be reflected in the plans. And thus, it's not reflected in the plans. Thus, the board cannot condition that. They've never conditioned that on anybody. They, all the plans that have to be presented ahead of time have to show it. The difference between the 2012 approval and this one is they showed in addition to meet the 40%.
Okay, I'm looking at that now.
Is there public comment, please?
If you'd like to, if there's anyone in the participating that would like to make any public comment, you can do so by raising your hand. If you go to the bottom of your screen, if you're participating by video, and click by participants, you will then be able to raise your hand. If you're on by telephone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. So we'll open public comments at this time.
Have a hand raised?
I don't see anything.
Under options, there's a hand up. But I don't know who that is.
I don't see anyone's hand.
It's just too much, it's too much, this technology's killing me. Okay, so...
How much time do you think you're going to need for a continuance?
I'm to the next scheduled meeting.
We're full on that meeting, I believe.
I mean, I was thinking perhaps April 22nd, so that you would have time to talk to the assessor, get the assessor out there?
We did speak with the assessor, and they said that they would not go out there. But if you spoke with them...
I spoke with him, he told me that he would be, he would, he would go out.
Okay, okay, yeah, I mean, if it's available, then we will take the 22nd.
Why don't we do April 22nd at 7 o'clock?
All right, I move to accept the applicant's request for a continuance of the accessory dwelling public hearing for 129 Stockbridge Road until April 22nd, 2021, at 7 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, board, for your time.
All right, we'll see you on the 22nd then. We have a public hearing at 7 PM, and we are almost 15 minutes early, so...
Can y'all go home?
No, you can't go home.
Well, I'm sorry, Mark.
We are home.
Not right now. Let's see, Karen, what would you like to do?
Well, you can do the minutes and accounting and start with the end stuff.
Okay.
So I move to approve the meeting minutes for February 25, 2021.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
And I move to approve the requisition of $1,142.50 to Harriman Associates for consulting services on the master plan, for $2,081.60 to Horstley Witten for the peer review services for Seaside and Situate Base 2, for $525 to Barrett Consulting Group LLC for work on the sign by law, and for $20.38 to WB Mason for office supplies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Okay, liaison reports. Does anybody have anything they need to report?
Well, I do for the zoning. Oh, sorry, Ben.
Ben, go ahead.
Oh, my, mine was just that, I think Karen sent a very well-worded email with an update on the master plan. So we have our, the latest draft available, and we're trying to get our final round of comments in with plenty of time. I think the deadline's later in April. But just if everyone could review the latest draft. I think we've made Emily, our consultant, worked pretty hard to address all the comments, and there's been some substantive changes to it. So let's just, I'll try to, kinda, we're getting towards the home stretch. So if, if everyone could just review that and try to get your comments in, that would be, that would be great. And then we're expecting to get that on the schedule with, with the Planning Board at some point.
Okay, thank you. Patty?
So zoning had a very interesting appeal from the residents of 124 Front Street. They are going to approach the town, but they don't know who, to talk about having stickered parking in Cole Parkway. They're gonna send a letter of the zoning board of appeals to, they assume it's the town administrator and the board of selectmen, for everyone in the harbor to allow expanded overnight parking in Cole Parkway to residents of the Harbor District. I never heard of that, so.
Well, that's interesting, because I find it somewhat difficult when you take public parking and basically make it private. So I'm not sure how they can do that.
Like I said, they were, there was a lot of concern that the people who bought the houses did not have parking when they bought them. But apparently, at that time, it was before the ABCD parking configuration, so they could park anywhere. Now, but all Cole Parkway funds, so people are moving. So there's a lot of angst about parking down there. So the other issue that came up as a side issue to this was if anybody ever wanted to expand the marina, there is no place to put any cars in Cole Parkway for overnight parking. So this will be an interesting discussion.
Well, maybe one of the things they need to think about is in the summertime for the boaters, to have them drop their stuff at the, have a drop off at the town marina, and then park up at Jenkins School. And then have a jitney to take them back. So then that frees up some space.
No.
So that they're not jamming the place. Anyway, that's a thought.
But that was, so they had four, four items on their agenda. They withdrew one without prejudice, but of course, they approved all the other three. Yeah, okay, just want you to know, so. That's it for that. Conservation is busy, busy, busy. Try to, Wetlands on Tilden Road, big project over there.
Where on Tilden Road?
So you know where the farm is across from Rainbow Court? The Madeiros, the Monteros?
Yes.
So apparently, there are four houses right in a row on that long driveway. And the two in the back want to take out a dwelling, but they haven't delineated the wetlands. And so they withdrew that, they're gonna go, come back to that. They want Amy to go back out and look at that. It's, it's pretty wet back there. I've never even been to a four houses there. I lived there forever, right down the street, so. And it's all about wetlands hearings, and they're concerned about people building all of the barrier beach still. So that's it.
Okay, I went to traffic rules, and a gentleman, he did not give his name, his full name. I think he lives up on Old Oak and Bucket, Walnut Tree Hill, and he's very concerned about the crosswalks at the roundabout and the fact that people go plowing through there and not paying any attention.
Oh, yeah.
So they're trying to come up with some methodology to slow people down. Sean is going to talk to Mass Highway, DOT, but also to, when you enter the roundabout, it's supposed to be 20 miles an hour, and of course, nobody pays any attention to that. So that's an enforcement issue. And then at the Jacob Hatch House, there's a lot of shrubbery and brush at the corner of Countryway and Driftway that probably needs to be cut back, because it impedes sight distance. So they're gonna talk about maybe more signage, et cetera, repaint the side, the, the crosswalks, et cetera. So that's what they discussed on Tuesday night. And I noticed in the Mariner today, which I think is good news, that Complete Streets awarded the town of Situate $400,000 to complete the sidewalk from Huey Road down to Greenwood, which I think is really a terrific thing. Excellent, so. That's all I have to report on traffic rules. And then I received a phone call from a business owner down on Front Street trying to figure out how to engage businesses to take down their Christmas decorations and to do, you know, clean up the place and make it lovely. And it's really up to the property owners, more than it is the businesses. So it has nothing really to do with us on the Planning Board. I suggested that you talk to Sutupisa, who's a Chair of Economic Development, and our new Planning and Development Director, Kyle Boyd. So when in doubt, you delegate.
There you go.
There you go. So we have five more minutes.
And there was one more thing. How do we, Country Club is putting in a new septic system?
Joy of Rapture.
And, well, they had to continue it, because DEP hasn't given it a number yet. So it's a Presby system, I'm not too sure what that means. Any of the engineers can tell us?
Does Steve know what that is?
Or Mr. McLean?
I'm looking it up right now. I don't know off the top of my head.
I learned a little bit about Presby systems from a meeting I was at this week. They're kind of a smaller system, and they, they don't take up as much room as a regular standard septic system. So could be very similar to what was done at Huris Estates.
Okay.
But there's, I'm told there's Presby systems all over town.
Yeah.
They haven't decided to file one of them yet, so Conservation is awfully to let them go ahead with the project.
Bob, did you make it to any of the meetings that you had signed up for?
Yeah, so Economic Development Committee, there have been two since we last met. And they're discussing the North Situate, either called the Visitor Center or the Clubhouse. But the building next to the playground, also, there were discussions on the future look of what is gonna go on at Pier 44, mostly. The Planning Board, so. Also, the Public Building Commission was a lot of, lot of discussion about the senior center.
Okay, who was that?
Not me.
That was you, Stephen? I love Zoom, it's so fun. Okay, we've got two minutes to waste between now and then. Anything else that's earth-shattering?
Well, I can give you a brief update, and I can probably do it in two minutes.
Yes.
Hurris Estates will be coming on our agenda for next meeting, asking for a subdivision extension. 60 Countryway mixed-use special permit is not going forward. I'm talking with the brewery about, they kinda wanna be outside this year, and they wanna have more stone gravel surface for, for walkways and do outdoor seating and not have indoor seating. So we're trying to work that out. The Merit property has been sold, that residential compound development. So I talked to the attorney for the new buyer. We'll see when that comes in. And we got a project eligibility application for Bartlett Fields.
For how many units, Karen?
168.
How many?
268.
268, holy cow.
Rental.
And how tall are these buildings, Karen?
Well, they say they're four stories, four, four-story buildings.
Okay, all right.
So I'm working on comments to the town administrator. And then the town administrator is putting together all the comments he receives from all the departments, and then submitting them by April 22nd.
And I think people, you all should know that the group that is going forward with this is Toll Brothers.
It's Toll Brothers Apartment Division, which is different from Toll Brothers Division, that residential division.
But it's still Toll Brothers by any other name.
And they're gonna, and they're gonna clear cut the forest from 3A to Claprow.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay, all right, it is now 7 o'clock and time for our public hearing on a special permit accessory dwelling at 63 Situate Avenue. And I'll read the, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and 11, with Situate zoning by law, Section 530, accessory dwelling special permit, and Section 940 referrals, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 7 o'clock PM on Thursday, March 25th, 2021, in the Select Board's Hearing Room at the Situate Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner David and Anne Mahar for an accessory dwelling special permit within an existing attached garage at property located at 63 Situate Avenue, Situate. Property as shown on the assessor's map, block parcel 40-4-9. Plans are available in the Planning Board Office, remote access only, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you. All right, who is making the presentation on this, please?
I will be. I'm Paulette O'Connell from Oco Architecture Design. I'm here on behalf of Amy and David Mahary, who are also here online. So most of that, you know, explained way is there's an existing three-car garage with a unfinished space above it. The plan is to convert that into an apartment. So the, according to the assessors, the house is at three thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square feet. The second floor of the garage, once finished, will be seven hundred and sixty-two square feet. So we're at twenty-two percent of the overall. So although we're over seven hundred and fifty, we're much below the forty percent of the living area, the main, main dwelling. It meets all zoning. It's only, the average height's about twenty-six foot three, lower than the thirty-five. It's thirty-two point one feet from the street, which is over the thirty feet that we need. And on the side and rear, it's a corner lot. It comes nowhere near there. And the home is also on sewer. So we don't have a septic issue in this particular property.
All right. And you have read the responses from the fire department, water department and sewer. That the building is to be hardwired for the fire department and then fees will need to be paid for sewer and for water, and your water. Hook up.
Yep.
Sure. And Mrs. Mahary, you're unmuted, so you can speak.
Yes, yes.
Although I think the water recommendation that we had was simply that, a recommendation and not a requirement.
That's correct. It's a, it's a recommendation, but it's a very, it's a hard recommendation, but it is a recommendation.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open it up to the board for discussion. Steve?
You know, I think in, on the whole, it looks, it looks fine to me. I mean, it feels like it fits all of the requirements under the accessory dwelling. And it looks to me like it's, you know, it, it's going to be, it's going to fit in with the rest of the house. So that it, you know, it's, it's not something that's going to stand out or, you know, feel more, it'll feel subordinate to the main house. It is a, just a single bedroom accessory dwelling, correct?
Yes.
And the lighting on it is, is, is there any outdoor lighting that's going to be on this?
It's all existing.
So no, no new lighting. Okay. No, I don't have any other questions, Ian.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ben?
I don't really have much, but I, just to clarify, it looks like from the plans that the, the majority of the accessory dwelling is going to consist of interior renovations, except for kind of some dormering and like a small deck and maybe an exterior stairwell. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no, there's no change to the, to the footprint of the structure or anything?
Not at all.
Okay, that, that's all I have at this time.
Patty?
Nothing here. Thank you.
Hey, and Bob?
No, I agree with everyone's assessment, but.
All right, and Karen?
I just want to, I, I agree with everyone's assessment. I just want to say that as part of the standard conditions, we always require no on-street parking for the primary or the accessory dwelling. And the planning board reserves the right to have an inspection prior to occupancy.
Okay.
All right. Comment?
So if you'd like to make any public comment, you can go to the bottom of your screen and click on participants, then be able to raise your hand. If you're participating just by phone, you can hit star nine. And we will enter public comment at this time. I don't think we have any comments.
Okay, all right. This one was easy. They should, they should all be this easy. Really, thank you very much. Your job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. I make, I move to make the following findings of fact. One, on February eighteen, twenty twenty-one, David and Amy, how do you pronounce your last name?
Mahary.
Mahary, thank you, applied for special permit for an attached accessory dwelling on the property at sixty-three Situate Avenue. Two, according to the town of, town of Situate's assessors records and the deed, the property at sixty-three Situate Avenue is owned by David and Amy Mahary. Three, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the floor area of the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately seven hundred and sixty-two gross square feet and seven hundred and four net square feet. The application indicates that this is twenty-three percent of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, which is thirty-one hundred square feet, according to the applicant. The assessor's card indicates the net square footage of the house to be three thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square feet. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning by law for accessory dwellings as the by law allows seven hundred and fifty square feet or forty percent of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-family home. For the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit and there will only be one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R three zoning district. The proposed attached accessory dwell, dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for a primary dwelling. Six. Yes, the proposed accessory dwelling is proposed to be located on the second floor of an existing attached garage. Access will be via, via an internal staircase and elevator inside the three-car garage. There is a secondary access via a back door and stairway from the accessory dwelling unit. This is located at the east side of the building. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. The foundation location plan sixty-three Situate Avenue, Situate, Mass. Dated four ten fourteen, revised ten twenty-eight fourteen by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Shows the location of the garage. A photograph taken in February twenty twenty-one shows a bituminous concrete driveway for the existing dwelling and a three-car garage along with a paved backup spot slash basketball area. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Now, and the owners have submitted a signed notarized statement that they will occupy one of the units at sixty-three Situate Avenue. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and sewer. DPW requirements for water connections and sewer connections will be met. Eleven, the applicant, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning by law for accessory dwelling special permit. All right, accept a motion on the findings of fact.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Ms. Barvine? Ms. Lambert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard? You're muted, Mr. Pritchard.
All right, I was trying to make sure my computer didn't make extraneous noises.
Thank you. And Mr. McLeod, McLean? I, thank you. unanimous all in favor.
All right. I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at sixty-three Situate Avenue with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after a public hearing on twelve seventeen fifteen. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions. Any construction shall be substantially, shall substantially conform to architectural plans by OCO Architecture for sixty-three Situate Avenue, Mass. Residential addition and renovation dated one thirteen twenty-one with revisions through two five twenty twenty-one, consisting of a cover sheet, A zero zero zero, notes and legends, A zero zero one, overall flow plan, A one hundred, first floor garage plan, A one oh one, second floor plan, A one oh two, roof plan, A one oh three, front elevation, A two oh one, rear elevation, A two oh two, side elevation, A two oh three, section through new dormer, A three oh one, enlarged plans, A four oh one, enlarged kitchen plan, A four oh two. Foundation location plan sixty-three Situate Avenue, Situate, Mass. Dated four ten fourteen, revised ten twenty-nine fourteen, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. For upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that he or she is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March one yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, zoning Board of Appeals, Department of Public Works, Fire Department and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW Water Division for the accessory dwelling. The DPW recommends a separate water service for the accessory dwelling. Eight, the sewer connection must meet all requirements of the DPW Sewer Division for the accessory dwelling, including an eight thousand dollar sewer connection fee. Nine, any lighting show, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, legal state or federal holidays. Construction includes idling of vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and all other construction activities. Runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silk socks shall be used as necessary. Is there a second, please?
Second?
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Ms. Barvine?
Hi.
Ms. Lambert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Mr. McLeod, McLean? Oh, my God. I don't know why I keep doing that. Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, I think we can just continue. We have seven thirty informal discussion, seven new Driftway. And I see that. Who's here for that? Walter Sullivan, how do you do? You're muted, Walter. Okay, there you go.
That's usually not unintentional when it comes to me.
All right.
So with me here tonight is also the applicant Frank Pollack, who's available by telephone. The project engineers Eric Schumacher and Brad McKenzie from McKenzie Engineering and Villa T-Ball, the architect. So this, we are seeking under the VCN twenty-one residential units. And what I thought I would have the team do, if it meets with the pleasure of the board, is have Mr. Schumacher take the board through the plans. Explain what our, what our concept is and how we seek to achieve development of what is a very difficult site that's currently fifty-four percent covered with impervious material and that we, we seek to significantly lessen with this development. And then the architect, Mr. T-Ball, will address any questions about his design. And I thought then I could talk informally with the board about some of the zoning challenges that we see and some of the relief that we may need. So if that's okay with the board, I thought I would ask Mr. Schumacher to address the board.
All right, fine.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Schumaker. I'm a project engineer at McKenzie Engineering Group. Do you mind if I screen share the plans?
That's fine.
It says host disabled participant screen sharing at the moment.
I think that's a cue to you, Shari.
I'm, I'm getting to it. Haven't done this in a little while, so you have to give me a moment.
There's Seth, when we need him.
I can, I can discuss the existing conditions while we wait. So the site is bordered by Chief Justice Cushing Highway to the west and New Driftway to the south. The first Herring Brook and developed residential and commercial properties are located directly to the north as well as the west. The site is currently comprised of a developed commercial building with an associated parking lot that's no longer in use near the building or the parking area. There are currently no stormwater controls on the site and runoff sheet flows untreated into the first Herring Brook as well as directly onto the new Driftway roadway. And we are located in the Village Center and Neighborhood District in the Green Bush Driftway Gateway District, Gateway Business Subdistrict. There's a number of overlay districts that currently are located on the site. We're located in the Village Business Overlay District as well as.
You're not located in the Village Business Overlay District. That, there's a mistake in the zoning map, so you're not.
That is changed.
You're only in the VCN.
Thank you. A portion of the site is also located in the Flood Plane and Watershed Protection District, the Water Resource Protection District, the Salt Marsh and Tide Land Conservation District, as well as DEP Zone Two and FEMA Flood Zone AE at elevation sixteen.
Eric, you weren't. Turn your screen. You most certainly can right now.
All right, thank you. So that, just a quick rundown of the existing conditions, like I mentioned. The Chief Justice Cushing Highway is located over here to the west. First Herring Brook back here to the north and, okay, right here in the new Driftway intersection. So jumping to the site design. So the proposed development will consist of a four-story residential building with associated bituminous concrete parking area and other site infrastructure. We're providing twenty parking spaces, including one handicap space. So down here are the land usage tables that basically run through the dimensional constraints of the zoning by law. And over here is Section seven fifty point five D, which is the building step back and street enclosure table. Now, this table runs through the different offsets from, from the front property line and the maximum building heights required for that stepped requirement. So at zero feet from the right away, max building height is twenty-five. Twenty-five feet away, max building height is thirty-five. Fifty feet away, it's forty-five. And our proposed design is shown in this column for forty-five and a half feet, located minimum twenty-five feet from the roadway. That's at this corner. So our other goal with this design was to bring the site into compliance with the stormwater management standards. As I mentioned earlier, there is no stormwater controls and runoff ends up back here untreated in the first Herring Brook as well as directly onto the right away. So our design will incorporate some stormwater management standards and bring the site into compliance with regard to water quality as well as peak rate reduction of the site. And as Walter mentioned earlier, the existing conditions comprised the site of fifty-four percent impervious coverage. And this design results in thirty-nine percent impervious. So we're reducing the impervious coverage of that site by approximately fifteen percent. With that, I'll hand it off to Phil, our team's architect, to discuss a little bit about how the building's going to look. And.
Just ask a question before you close that screen. It looks, the building is almost on top of the brook.
There, there's a setback from the slope. The brook is located beyond the property line. So this is the slope down.
I get it. Okay. Thank you. I get it, okay. Thank you.
Phil, you should be able to share your screen whenever you- Phil, you should be able to share your screen whenever Eric is all set.
Thank you very much. I'm going to see if I can- Are you seeing the, the rendering? That's- That is, that's an older rendering. I, I will need to show you one that's been updated. So the, the building itself is a four-story building with a, with a penthouse, two penthouse units. The main building height is, Eric, it said is some 45 and a half feet above average grade plane. The floor-to-floor heights between floors are approximately 10 feet. And the penthouse roof is 10 feet above the, above the main roof. So I believe it fits within the zoning requirements there. As you had seen on the site plan, the building was angled from New Driftway, and that was to try to accommodate the step height setback requirements that are in the zoning to want to give it some visual interest. In the front, let me see if I can pull up that particular of the- So this is the, the most recent rendering. You can see that the bays in the front, as I had said, they step back and create different bays and, and along the face to try to give it some visual interest. And that's also to, to, to try to stay within the step setbacks. So the first corner here that you can see my pointer on, I, I hope you can see my pointer.
Yes.
So that falls within the height setback requirements of the step zoning requirement. This bay here also falls within the step, within the requirements. So this is around 25, I think 25 feet. This is 35 feet. This roof line up here, of course, is at the 45 feet mark. And so this corner, this bay, this bay do fall within an area that exceeds the requirement. And we'll, we'll be getting into that. So the floor areas, the parking area, which is below grade, is 7,408 square feet. There are 16 parking spaces in, in the parking, the, the underground, the underground, underbuilding parking. The first floor is also 7,408 square feet. It will contain two, for two-bedroom units and a lobby in public areas for the main entrance. And let me see if I can get that on there. Get back to that. So the first, we have our lobby. We have four two-bedroom units. We have an area for post boxes and, and the amenities that we would need for, for public service. The second floor is 7,474 square feet, has four two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit. Likewise, third floor and fourth floor have diminishing areas because the, the bays that we've had are essentially being shrunk back to provide that architectural relief on the exterior for visual, for visual interest. But they still have four two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit. And then the penthouse will have 3,704 square feet and two two-bedroom units. So that gives us a total of 18 two-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units for a total of 21 units.
Where, where's the penthouse on these drawings?
Let me, that would be right here. So the penthouse is set back a minimum of 10 feet on the front and sides. It does not meet that requirement in the back. And I believe we are, I, I think we're five feet off the back. So there we would also seek some relief. And then you can see the parking level below. We have the elevator and 16 parking spaces.
So what's the height of the penthouse?
So that would be 10 feet above the main roof, which is 45 feet. So the, the penthouse would end up being 55. Let me get you a more current elevation. I apologize for not having them all in one area. There we go. Oh, the, the exterior siding is, is a hardyback, hardy plank clapboard siding for the majority. The bays that are coming out on the sides and in the front, they would be a shingle style hardy plank. So it's all cementitious clapboard and shingle style. Let's see if I can- get the rendering back for you. So that again is the, the rendering of, of the elevations. If there's any questions for this, or if not, I will turn it back to Walter.
All right, so as Ben alluded to in our presentation, there, there are some, there's a lot of zoning challenges. This is a very difficult site, as we've said from the very beginning. We are required to have a density bonus improvement in an outdoor amenity space as part of the bylaw. What we would propose to do is to make a contribution to the town to make improvements in the area. It, it, the, the space is just so tight to sort of pull all that off doesn't really work. Similarly, we have an affordable component that is required. And we've tried a lot of different ways to try to get that on the site without it working. And so we're trying to locate something in the Green Bush area where we can build four affordable units offsite. So before we file our full-scale plan, we, we will have something to present to the board in that regard. We obviously have to file a conservation commission and do a traffic study. Our team has alluded to the, some of the zoning challenges with height and setbacks due to the penthouse and the configuration of the lot, which again is very challenging. But we've come a long way. We've been at this for a year trying to make this site work. I think that it is an improvement from where we started, and I think it's an improvement for the town. We are reducing the impervious material from 54 to, I think, 39%. And currently, there's no stormwater management whatsoever, and we would change that. So it, it's something that's come a long way. It's a challenge, but we're very pleased at where we are now. And we think we've made some progress, and we would welcome any comments from the board. And it is our hope to go from this informal submission to submit formally for the board and also to get before conservation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Karen?
Well, I guess I would recommend going down the list of waivers and discussing each, each section and what the board feels about each one.
Okay. Who has the waivers?
You want to go, you want to read them, Walter?
Yeah, I have it in front of me. So 540.4C is the density bonus improvement. I thought it made sense to take that along with the outdoor amenity space, which I know that's a little bit out of order because that's 72, 752.1. I think in the past, the board has allowed for payment to the town in, in lieu thereof. And we would, we would look to do the same thing and try to reach an accord with the town. I guess it would be the benefit, Karen, presumably the Green Bush area. This is a very challenging site, and to make it all work, I don't think we have enough room to do that on this site. So that was the reason for those to, you know, request for zoning relief.
Yeah, I ask a question about sort of just the outdoor space. Is there any work contemplated on, you know, the exterior that is improving the sidewalks and the lighting and sort of changing the look and feel around there?
So we definitely looked at that, Mr. Pritchard, and, and we're open to suggestions and, and to work with the town in that regard. You know, where, we, we, we recognize that it's, it's a fast area. And, you know, there, there's, there's things that we could do to improve it. And so we, we've looked at it, but we're certainly open to suggestions, I guess is the quick answer.
Okay.
Are, are you at all worried, just talking about the fast area? Are you at all worried that, you know, once we, if we had 21, you know, different families occupying these spaces that at some point in time, we're going to face just a, a wave of noise complaints about the rotary and the traffic?
I don't know. I don't know if we've considered no, noise to be an issue. I, I, from our, from our standpoint, I mean, obviously, it once was a, a commercial, heavily-used commercial medical building. You know, obviously, the traffic pattern would be different. We're going to have to do a traffic study, Mr. Pritchard. But, you know, we'll mitigate whatever we have to do, but I think the site will accommodate that. I mean, I think that's our position.
Okay, I, I was, I was really speaking to the point that you're converting it to residential use, and it's sitting right on probably one of the noisiest traffic locations in Situate.
Walter, if I could, I mean, a, as far as construction goes, we can certainly do some sound attenuation within the walls and get, upgrade the windows for sound attenuation. So inside, it would remain fairly quiet.
You plan for these buildings to be owner-occupied or rented?
Right now, we're proposing this to be a rental.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't mean to get us derailed on the list of waivers.
No problem. That's not hard to do with me. So the next one I had-
I don't, don't think we're really done with this one. Outdoor amenity space and density bonus improvement. I'm not really sure that the board should be waiving outdoor amenity space. I, I think there can be some creative thinking with, with the, with the open space types, outdoor amenity space types listed in Section 752.2. You didn't waive it on the multifamily you approved. You didn't waive it on the gas station. I think there can be some creativity because they have a whole big area in front of the building that is going to be a green lawn space. I'm just not sure that that's something that should be waived.
And it would be probably worthwhile to know what alternatives have been considered.
You know, we, we can certainly illustrate that. I mean, we, we did actually originally try to put some playground area out in front and everything. But again, we're, we're trying to improve drainage and, you know, you know, it's now covered in pavement by over half, and we're trying to drastically reduce that, improve that situation. But, I mean, we can relook at that, and, and maybe we could do something smaller than is required to Karen's point. And, and, I mean, it's, it's a very, very difficult site. And every time we try to put something in, Mr. Pritchard, it triggers another setback or, or something with, with the Rivers Act or one of those issues. So we, we can certainly look at it again, but it's a challenge.
All right, Karen, are you all set with this?
Sorry, I just want to come in and interrupt for a minute. I just want everyone to know that Rebecca Lewis is joining the meeting.
Hi, Rebecca.
Hey, Rebecca.
If the board is okay with it, I mean, if the board is, if the board is okay with it, then, you know-
I'm not sure, I am not sure. Not at this point. And, you know, the whole idea of putting affordable units offsite is, is an issue. And since these are all rentals, there's no way that the one-bedrooms couldn't be affordable rental units?
Well, we, we certainly have looked at that, and, and we haven't found a specific site offsite. So if we don't, we're going to be coming back with that. I mean, Ms. Burbank, we'll check it again, but it, it's, it's, it's very difficult. And that's when we, you know, we started thinking about offsite. That's something that we did over in Mr. Salamato's project in Hummer Rock. And so I was mindful of, of trying to, trying to do it that way rather than squeezing units in. But, but just like with the open space, we can demonstrate what we try to do and accomplish, and then, and sort of give the board options.
I'm not ready to waive anything this weekend.
And there's an issue with the height. That's a huge building. It's our gateway to town. It's five stories.
Yeah, I don't think the height meets the zoning bylaw.
No, it doesn't.
No. It's such a huge thing. As right as the first thing as you see is, we're just conserving.
Is that, just if we're jumping onto height, is that a waiver request? Or I'm trying to understand where, where the, sort of where it doesn't meet the bylaw?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Eric to sort of jump in here at some point. But we, we believe it's a waiver under the, under the, the VCN, and that's how we're, we're seeking it from this board. And it's, you know, it, it gets tricky with the measurements on the, on the height issue. And Eric, I don't know if I, if I can throw you in front of the bus on this one. You could address maybe, and maybe share the plan and illustrate, you know, where we're going over. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, so as you see down here in the building, setback, step back and street enclosure table. So distance from the right of way, 25 feet from the right of way, the max building height can be 35 feet. We're proposing 45 and a half, so we exceed that requirement for both locations that, that were offset from, from the right of way. So 50 feet as well as 25 feet. The entire, the entire building is 45 and a half, so.
That, that doesn't include the penthouse.
Doesn't include the penthouse.
The, the penthouse criteria is shown here below. The penthouse complies. It's 10 feet, I believe, and it's setback 10 feet from the edge of the building.
Just, can we go back to the 35? Did you, did you try to, did you design the building to try to meet the requirements at 30, 35 feet? From-
I think Phil can speak to that if, if we looked at alternatives for a 35-foot building.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying 35 feet at 25 foot from the right of way, right?
Yes.
So you could step it, you could continue to step it back, right?
Yeah, correct. Yep. That's based on average grade plane as well. That's, that's not just height of the building. It's based on an average grade plane, and we're grading up here from the wetland slope, so that, that grade plane is already low.
I just want to interject here that the maximum height of a multifamily building is 40 feet or four stories. And the building, you know, the different setbacks and stepbacks have to be considered. And that if you were to have the penthouse here, you're going to have to lower the primary building to get the height with the penthouse. I talked to our consultant who wrote the bylaw on this, and he indicated a penthouse can occupy 50% of the roof area. It must be setback one foot for every foot in height to a maximum of 10 feet. The standards are intended to hide the penthouse from being visible at the street level. The penthouse can exceed the height of the building type on which it is located, but is still subject to a maximum height of 45 feet in Figure 6, 750.5D. Therefore, a penthouse on top of a multifamily building can be no taller than 45 feet. So if the penthouse is 10 feet tall- So if the penthouse is ten feet tall, the multifamily building would have to be no taller than thirty-five feet. And the building that is thirty-five feet would have to be setback twenty-five feet. And the penthouse would have to be setback fifty feet from the street line. Yeah, I just wish to point out that in the zoning bylaw before the town meeting right now, it's it's very clear that you say height is something that you that can't be waived.
Okay, so so Karen, what you're saying, I guess, is that we would have to seek a variance from the ZBA, is that or 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 make it conform in that regard?
Uh, I guess so.
Okay.
Walter, if you if you'd like me to share my screen, I I have outlined the area where the roof is out of compliance.
Yeah, that would be helpful if you were to fill. Thank you.
So we have, we're at the twenty-five foot setback, so this portion of the roof is within within the the zoning requirements. This roof is setback so is to be compliant with the thirty-five foot height. And so we're at fifty feet where we we would be allowed the forty-five feet height, which is the majority of the building. So the area outlined in red is the only area of the building that is out of compliance. So it's a it's a fairly small portion, some twelve hundred square feet, I think.
I think I heard something a little different from Karen in that the penthouse, the maximum height of the penthouse is forty-five feet. Right, so and you're at fifty.
Well, I I will leave that one to Walter.
Okay.
I I know, I heard what Karen said, so so we'll we'll look at that um and and see what our options are.
Now, I was under the impression, Mr. Sullivan, at an initial sit down in terms of this project, that these were going to be condominiums. Is that true, Karen? I thought that they were.
I think that's what they said initially, but maybe they've changed. They've done some analysis to change their mind.
Okay, which they're entitled to do. But I'm wondering if it's almost too dense. I mean, would you be better served to have fewer but better?
Yeah, I mean, I I guess, you know, hearing feedback from the board is why we're here, to see what we can make the site work, how to make it work. It it is a very challenging site. Every time we tweak something, we trigger some other, you know, uh some other issue. Um, and so, you know, we we've we've done this with um open, we've done this with um uh outdoor amenity space, and we've done it without it. We've done it, and we we can look at it again. I think Frank would be amenable to trying it with condominium units, but it's it's very hard to make this work without the number of units that we're showing.
If I may also add, uh, we are restricted to the length of the building at a hundred feet, so this this building is shown at a hundred feet.
Okay. Can um can we keep going through other, any other issues? Just, I mean, I just as a kind of an overarching, this this is this is still just a sort of a consultation conversation, correct? Nothing's been filed yet.
Right, correct, correct.
We we have to go to conservation as well.
Yep.
So I'm I'm not sure, Karen, if that takes care of all of all the things we want to discuss about.
Oh, well, you still have a couple on here that we didn't discuss. Seven fifty point uh six, the design standard, front yard build to zone, ten feet, thirty feet. You're saying you have a twenty-five feet and fifty feet?
Right, and and again, I don't know if we could share the screen, um, Phil or Eric, I don't know who wants to take that, so we can sort of walk through that.
Yeah, I can take that.
Thank you.
Um, so this northeastern corner is outside of the max front yard setback uh shown by this fifty-foot offset line. So it's my understanding that normally the entire front facade needs to be located within the minimum front yard setback. That's this ten-foot offset line down here and the thirty-foot maximum front yard setback, so we're located fifty feet with that front corner.
Does the board have any input to that?
Um, right. I would I would say that it um that one's gonna be sort of that, in my view, that sort of depends. I think we need to make sure we've addressed the the height issues and all of that. You know, it's I would say there's there's maybe room for some discussion on that one. Um, that's just sort of my thought here is, you know, we've got we've got kind of an angled building here, so it it makes it sort of makes it difficult to uh you know, to to comply with this thing particularly. I think I think it was sort of set up as sort of thinking that the buildings would sort of run parallel in in the zones, and we're not kind of there. So I, you know, I'd be willing to look at that, but as a let's let's get the other issues sort of uh addressed first. That's sort of my thought on anyway.
Can I interrupt for a second, too? I I think Brad wanted to make a comment, and he's texting me that he can't be unmuted at the moment.
Hi, can you hear me, everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Karen, I'm just I'm just kind of responding to your comment about the penthouse units. The penthouse units applying to the the height calculation and figure four. Uh, I saw on page one twenty-nine of the bylaw, there's a figure four, and underneath it, there's a uh number three says height limits do not apply to penthouse dwelling units as long as they're not visible from any sidewalk or the perimeter property line and meet the design standards of seven fifty point six. So I think that was the intent, I think, of the design, Phil's design. And I understand that maybe we need to relook, reconsider the um the waiver for the, because the penthouse unit is not meeting the one-to-one requirement, which might make it visible from a sidewalk. So um, am I am I misinterpreting the section?
I'm sorry, which section are we in?
Page one.
Page one twenty-nine.
Page one, I think I have the two thousand and twenty bylaw on page one twenty-nine, figure four, right underneath figure four. Uh, number three, penthouse.
Yep. Well, I will go back to our consultant and double check on this, but as I said, I, you know, I got to him once and um, you know, I I'll ask again. That's that's what I can, I'll ask again.
Okay, it just seems clear to me that if we can meet the design standards of seven fifty point six, it wouldn't apply to the forty-five foot limitation.
All right, I I'll ask again. I mean, but right now, you're not meeting the design standards under seven fifty. You're not meeting the height standard of forty feet.
We're not meeting the one-to-one height setback. We're not meeting that ratio, so that's something we need to reconsider.
And you're not meeting the building height of forty feet.
Well, I think it's forty-five feet. At as long as you meet the setback, the step uh, the step.
Right, but the main height of a multifamily building is allowed to be forty feet. And the penthouse is on top of that. You're not meeting the main height of the multifamily building.
Is there a is there a disparity in the bylaw in that that the section that Eric referenced on the plan with the set with the steps allows a forty-five foot height as long as we meet, I'm trying to pan to that section.
All right, I will um, I will find out if there is a discrepancy.
At, yeah, at the fifty-foot setback, the building height's allowed to be forty-five feet. So I think that was uh, that's a waiver that we're asking for because obviously, there are parts of the building that um are greater than are greater than thirty-five feet between the twenty-five and and fifty-foot setback.
All right, so I'm remembering the conversation with the consultant and I, but I will go back and check um on this. Yes, this is a, this is a table that has maximums, but yet the basic standards are in the table, table one A in seven fifty point six. And that's where it says forty feet. But oh. I'll ask if there's a discrepancy. I I don't worry, I'll ask.
Okay, appreciate that.
Um. And go, you know.
All right, so we'll be guided by that. Um, Karen, thank you.
All right. There's one other one that you didn't get to yet.
All right, which one?
No parking shall be in the front build to zone.
Right, seven eight, seven fifty point eight point D. Is that right, Karen? Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no parking shall be in front of the build zone, and we have a portion of parking spaces within the fifty feet max of the front build to zone.
We see that on the on the drawing.
Eric, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Thank you.
As Walter mentioned, it's it's in the max front yard build to zone, not not the men. So that's within thirty feet of the right of way. It's these two spaces and a portion of the handicap parking space. So a total of three.
And what's the what's the parking requirement for this building? Karen, do you know?
Walter, do, yeah, I don't have that on the top of my head.
No, I didn't calculate parking um for requirement for this building yet.
Okay.
Let's go to a quick question. What are you using? Where do you measure the grade um for the building height?
I I did a preliminary grading plan um for this site, just just to give us a rough number to go off of. Um, so that's that's something I have back at the office, but I I put a day or two into into hand grading the site and coming up with a average grade plane based on the requirements in your bylaw.
How much fill will you bring in? Or would you bring in?
I I don't have that on the top of my head. That would that would need to be a mass balance analysis that we would have to look at.
How many parking spaces are underneath the building?
Believe believe it's sixteen.
There is sixteen.
Sixteen under the building and how many outside the building?
Twenty outside the building.
Does, how many bedrooms are there?
Um. Thirty, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine? Karen, do they have adequate parking?
I can calculate parking at this point. I mean, there's other issues that, you know.
That are more important, right?
They're more important. We'll calculate parking. They'll have to show how they calculate the parking compared to the square footage and everything when they come in. They, you know, it's one one and a half spaces per two-bedroom unit, one space per one-bedroom unit because they're in the VCN.
Okay.
Table two um on page one seventy-six.
That that would be a total of thirty spaces required.
And you have more, you're showing more than thirty.
That is correct.
So you might be able to eliminate a couple that aren't in compliance?
I think we were hoping that, you know, obviously, he saved some for guest parking and the like, but if if we re- relook um the amenity open space, um, yeah, that might be something we do, Mr. Pritchard.
And have you have you thought about stormwater management here yet? And how you will do it?
I I think Eric can address that preliminarily. I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, preliminary, um, as Walter said preliminarily, we'll uh probably do some catch basins and a storm scepter unit to treat the water quality and get TSS removal and from there, I will do some soil testing on site and establish groundwater. But usually with a site like this, that's compact, um, we'll have to do some chambers underneath the parking lot. Uh, again, that's gonna depend on the groundwater levels.
It does the does the site to the um north, um, does that is that tapered down to the brook or is that tapered from the brook down to your site?
Down to the brook. The brook is the low point.
Is the low point. Well, I think I think there could just in general, there could be some value if the stormwater, if there's stormwater management here is you know, i- is, you know, protecting Herring Brook at this point, um, as opposed to just the 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 runoff that we have right now, but I I guess that remains to be seen as to, you know, what improvements really can be had from stormwater management and uh and also meet the requirements of the, you know, the watershed protection districts and stuff.
All right, have you had any type of discussion with sewer availability and water availability?
Yeah, we we've made some preliminary inquiries. We we will seek um letters from both indicating that this this capacity before we submit.
Hey, I think it's important that it not be that there's a pipe big enough to flow water, but that there is actually capacity available in the town system. So I I would I would differentiate those two things.
Understood.
Yep.
All right, are there any further questions? I I think um Mr. Sullivan and his his group needs to work on this.
I second that.
Okay, anybody else? Do we want any public comments?
Sure.
Sure. What the public has to say.
If you would like to participate from the public, you can um go to the bottom of your screen and raise your hand under participants or by telephone, you can hit star nine. I did not see any public comment at this time.
Well, Mr. Sullivan, thank you so much for your presentation, and I am sure that we will be in further discussion with you.
And could I interject one more thing? This this is a a facility that we would, at some point, refer to the design review committee to, so.
Yes. Absolutely.
Integrated into the game plan.
Yes. Goes without saying, Steve. Thank you. All right, thank you, people.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, our next item is a Form A for Zero Man Hill Road. Mr. Marabito, are you with us this evening?
Can you hear me, Anne?
I certainly can.
Hey, thank you. Today, our plan that we submitted to you on behalf of the applicant, Robert Terrell, the executor of your state was I has three lots, um lots four, five, and six. Lot four and six were the subject of a special permit approval for two fifty-foot lots by the zoning board of appeals back in December of last year. The decision for which was recorded with the town clerk on January twentieth. These lots are in the R two zone or the twenty thousand square foot zone. The two outer lots, namely lot four and six, are just over forty thousand. The two outer lots, namely lot four and six, are just over forty thousand square feet. And the middle lot has twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six square feet. Each lot would eventually contain one single family home, even though some of them are twice the land area. But a special permit law can only have a single family home on it. So that I'll, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
Karen?
Um, you all received a copy of the plan. You received a copy of the recorded special permit from the Z B A. They have access and frontage and, um, the plan should be endorsed.
Okay. All right, I just need to find the motion. It's here somewhere. We have more pieces of paper than we know what to do with. Any discussion from the board concerning this? Okay, um, I move to endorse this approval not required. A plan of land in the town of Situate, Mass., Man Hill Road by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner, Robert Terrell, administrator of the, the estate of Nancy Jo Terrell dated November twelfth, twenty twenty, as the division of land is not a subdivision because lots four through six, as shown in the plan, have access and frontage on Man Hill Road, a public way. Lots four and six have received a special permit filed with the town clerk on one twenty twenty-one to create two lots with a minimum of fifty feet of frontage designated as lots four and six. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Albows in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
We look forward to receiving the stormwater permit.
Pardon?
Look forward to receiving the stormwater permit for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next on this list is five thirty-three Country Way. All right, five thirty-three Country Way. Um, I know that you want two Form As, correct, Paul?
Yes.
All right, here's my issue with this. Um, you have applied for a scenic road hearing, which will be heard on the, I believe it's the eighth of April.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. The wall in front of one of these A and R plans is two to three feet high. It's a retaining wall. And I'm wondering, Paul, if you're not putting the cart before the horse on this one, that you would be better served to withdraw this and then resubmit it after you do your scenic road hearing and show us exactly what you're going to do with that wall and how it is going to relate to the rest of the property vis a vis a common driveway. I mean, I think that that is very important before we just go forward with what may be considered. You have the frontage, but you don't have, at this moment in time, the access to that frontage.
Okay, Anne, um, can I speak to that?
You certainly may.
All right, thank you. There's a, a number of things that are going on with this. First of all, in order, uh, be, uh, before the house on lot one or lot two can be, uh, constructed, there's six separate permits that need to be acquired from the town of Situate. This is one of them. The other five are the septic system approvals from the Board of Health, um, the stormwater permit, uh, the scenic road permit, the common driveway permit, which we plan to file on the next day or so. And, um.
I thought this was an A and R we were discussing.
It is.
I'm, I'm.
So why do we want to talk about all that other stuff? It's just.
Right.
Because Anne suggesting we, we hold off on this part of it, in which I, I would rather not do. I, I want to get this application out of the way because we have the Board of Health approvals, and this is the second one of six. Um, we, we have filed for the scenic road, which is separate from an A and R. This, this, this A and R plan meets all the tests for endorsement by the planning board under the, um, uh, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one, which is the subdivision control statute. What, what it requires is that you have, that these, each lot has frontage on, in this case, the public way, which it does. The statute also talks about the lot having the required frontage under the bylaw. And it only talks about frontage, which is one hundred feet. Each lot has a hundred feet of frontage plus. So based on that alone, these lots comply with the requirements for a Form A under the subdivision control law. In that A, they're on a public way, they have the frontage. Um, these are not buildable lots, and there's a note on the plan of that effect, and in, in the application, we also point out as well in the note that the access to these, the access is planned to be over a common driveway. The access is to, to a lot in Situate is determined by the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw says that your access to your lot has to be over your legal frontage or a common driveway. What we, what the owner's chosen to do here is to have access to the two lots over common driveway, which would go up that interior property line. The garages would be at the upper part of the lot.
Again, we're not talking about any of that stuff right now, right? All we're talking about is this is to meet the requirements of a Form A. Darren, if you think it does, then I think that's all we should discuss here.
Right, so I think that we, we, we have to, all right, Paul, you're incorrect in one thing. Under the subdivision control law, then it's often say, um, vital access.
Right.
Vital access has been litigated as part of the subdivision of a Form A, and vital ass, access must exist before endorsing a Form A from court decisions. You have to beg, want, but access, the adequacy of the way, which country way is certainly adequate, and then you have the adequacy of access from the way to the buildable portion of the area. The access is not there now, but I agree it will be there with the, when a common driveway is approved. So ultimately, it's not a insurmountable thing that you can have access, but with the case, though, Pulos versus Braintree, access must be present on the ground. And access right now is not present on the ground.
So, um, can you, can you show that, um, drawing again and, and say where the access is because I'm assuming access is, uh, from the frontage, right?
Yes.
On, on this plan, it is.
Okay, why isn't that, why isn't that, um, and I'm not asking you, Paul, I'm, I'm really asking Karen, um, what, what's, what doesn't meet the test here, Karen? I want to make sure.
On, on lot one, on lot one, there's a, there's a, a, there's a concrete wall in the right of way that is approximately anywhere from two to three feet high. So can you drive your car up over the concrete wall right now? I'm not sure you can. I would tend to believe you can't.
The where? Is that it right there?
Yes, that's it right there.
Okay, so that, that doesn't meet the test of access then?
That's correct.
But lot two does have access. I mean, I, I think that Anne is right, perhaps that we should, that the Form A shouldn't be endorsed tonight, but let the board see where the common driveway is going to be. I mean, I asked D P W for comments because this is a complicated project, and, um, there is a concrete wall in the layout that's barring access at the proposed common driveway at this time. The D P W agrees to permit removal of the wall for access. However, they're concerned about safe site distance, which Mr. Maribito will show us when he files for the common driveway. And D P W supports the removal of the wall from the layout to allow for access and pedestrian access in front.
Also too, this is a re.
Sort of feels like the chicken or the egg, though, right?
It, it is, it is, but also to.
What we're trying to do is subdivide the land.
Right, but Steve, the, the thing is, this is a retaining wall. This is holding back basically a, a hill. That's what it's, that's what it's holding back. The criteria for an A and R is frontage, size, square footage, and access.
Well, until.
Doesn't get resolved until the retaining wall goes away?
That's right.
So then what is there to talk about then?
Or approval of the common driveway, Steve. I mean, under the common driveway public, public meeting, you're going to talk about all that. Um, I think that the Form A is not legit without the common driveway, and I'm not sure that the note on the plan, the note, the note on the plan says lot one and lot two access to be provided by a common driveway. It doesn't say lot one and two access. Um, it's not, are not, it's not real unless there's a common driveway.
There's no existing common driveway, so you can't.
No existing common driveway right now. It doesn't say lot one and lot two, shall, are, are approved, are accessible, um, only when if common driveway is approved. If the note were different, I, 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 this is, I think it's an endorseable plan ultimately, but I'm not sure it's endorseable tonight.
And, and that's my point, that's my point, Steve. I think that they put the cart before the horse. That it really needs to talk about.
All I was asking is what are, what is our criteria? If the criteria is that the physical restriction that we have for access right now is, uh, doesn't meet the test of, you know, adequate access, then, then we're done. There's nothing to approve or, um, or do at this point, and the, the issue is if they come back and propose a common driveway, but they don't have the land subdivided, how does that work?
Steve, you're, you're right on point. I'm going to back, let me go back to what I started out by saying. This plan does not ensure the construction of two homes. This is, this is one step in, in six steps. This plan meets all the criteria for endorsement by the board for an A and R plan.
I think, I think we just said there's one element there where it doesn't meet the criteria.
No, I don't agree with that. The subdivision control law talks about each lot having the requisite frontage that's required in the zoning bylaw for the town of Situate, in this case, for each lot. It talks about frontage only, doesn't talk about land area, I mean, lot area, it doesn't talk about access, it talks about the frontage.
I disagree, I disagree. In the A, in the A and R handbook, it talks about access. Access.
But the A and R handbook also talks about A and R plans with common driveways.
But we don't have a common driveway, Paul.
Drive.
At this point, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
But the thing is, if you came forward with your scenic road hearing with a sketch of, or a plan of what you plan to do with that wall, how you're going to take it out, how you're going to do whatever it is that you're going to do, then through that you will show your driveway. Then we could, I think, without too much trouble, approve your A and R.
Okay, the scenic road plan, just so you know, shows the opening that we're proposing for the common driveway.
Well, then, why can't you do that first, Paul?
So are you suggesting that we have the A and R plan endorsed April eighth at the night of the scenic road public hearing?
No, I, so, um, we're, we're just talking, we're, we, we've narrowed this down to adequate access, quote unquote, adequate access, right? We're saying right now that you don't have adequate access. Come back when you have adequate access.
The, why don't we have adequate access?
You have a two-foot.
Right, the wall.
Wall in front of it. You can't drive over there.
Let me point something out to you. Again, the subdivision control law talks about each lot having its adequate frontage. In addition, under the Situate rules and regulations, the D P W, no matter where you put a driveway, whether it's common or not, we have to get a street opening permit from the D P W.
We're not talking about any of that. All we're talking about is the A and R, right? And if part of the.
Saying is.
Adequate access.
We have adequate access there.
No, you don't.
I think that's where the difference is here, Paul, is we don't, we don't see a three-foot retaining wall as providing you adequate access to the property.
And what I would like you to do, Paul, is to withdraw this A and R until you show us how you plan to access through that cement wall.
All right, that, that'll be done on April eighth.
That's why I'm suggesting that you.
So what I suggest is we continue this to April eighth.
Oh, I suggest that you can't continue an A and R, that you withdraw it and don't have to pay any additional application fees. Withdraw it and resubmit, and maybe we can talk about the note on the plan, but you won't have to pay any additional, um, any additional fees. That would be what I would suggest for the board.
How does the rest of the board feel? Abby?
What does, do you have to say?
I, I just, I just want to ask Karen a clarifying question. So at a scenic road hearing, they, let's, let's say the permit is approved, and we don't know that to be the case, but it's approved, there still won't be on the ground adequate access.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Right? So does the A and R, in your sort of legal assessment here, does the A and R have to have physical adequate access, or is it sufficient to have approved, um, you know, an approved, uh, document that says access can be had?
Well, if you'd like, I can clarify that with town council. I did not, I did not talk to her on this one. I have talked to her on several other ones in the past. Um, I can talk to her and see if we can't, um, come to an agreement about a proper note on the plan, because I do think that at some point, this is an endorseable plan. I think they can get access, but it's just a timing of when.
Yeah, I, I think that's the question. If Paul comes back and he gets access on the eighth, and then once the A and R approved, the question is, well, access on the eighth is a paper approval, it's not actual access, right?
The eighth is only the scenic road hearing.
Yeah.
He hasn't even filed the application for the common driveway.
Right, right, so.
He indicates he'll file in the next few days.
Yeah.
So at least we won't be hearing the, we've advertised for the scenic road. I think the tree is posted, and we would at least have a plan that you could look at for the meeting on the eighth, if indeed they are going to file in the next few days.
Okay. I think we should just get clarity on whether it has to be physical access or not for an A and R. Because obviously that won't happen until construction starts, right?
So just to be clear, the, the board's only issue is that wall up there? You think that's, that's what's stopping you from?
Yes.
Access, okay.
Yes.
I know, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, and I'll probably ask to withdraw it without prejudice and resubmit it, but I just want to say for the record, even with the wall there, if this was a single lot and the driveway was going to go through the wall, we still have to get a curb cut from the D P W, and we still have to get a scenic road permit. You also have the comments from the D P W. They, they, they're kind of ahead of the game. I, I spoke to, um, one of the members over there today, and they want to see the whole wall taken out, period, because they, they want to see the sidewalk widen, you know, they.
To go take it out and then come back for an A and R.
Right.
Take it out.
Right, but you have a little bit of a problem, Steve, um, in terms of drainage, and you have to have, um.
Yeah, I just, that's why I'm. Yeah, I just, that's why I'm asking the question, Karen, is whether they have to physically have it removed, or whether there has to be some sort of approval, because it occurs to me that if you're, if you file a common driveway permit, you have to have lot boundaries for those common driveways. And right now, he doesn't. Right?
Uh, right. I mean, I'll ask town council.
Yeah, so it is, it is sort of a rock and a hard place here, I think.
Paul, I have one quick question for you before we move on.
Okay.
You have sufficient area, over forty thousand square feet. You already have a driveway. Why wouldn't you put in a duplex?
That, that's not my decision to make. That's the property owner's decision.
Okay.
Now, as you all know, there's a very old house up there, which is quite large. I've spoken to some of the neighbors, the owner has as well, and, um, they're anxious to see that go. They're, they're aware there's two homes going in there, and I think some of them are looking forward to see the change, for obvious reasons, but.
All right, thank you. I was just curious. All right, so you, you will withdraw this A and R without prejudice?
Yes, yes.
And resubmit?
We'll resubmit it for the April 8th.
Um, and say, um, they don't have to pay an additional fee.
And there will be no additional fees?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, it would be good to get clarification from town council on that. So if he's gonna file it for the 8th, there's actually something we can do.
I will do my best to get an answer from her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to vote on this.
All right. Um, all those in favor of allowing Mr. Maribito to withdraw this Form A without prejudice, to resubmit, um, without any further fees on the 8th of April?
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Ms. Barbine? Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Hey, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, we have, um, vote the planning board reports for annual town meeting. We have fair housing and affordability standards. All right, um, these have to be presented, we have to vote on these right now, but they will be presented at town meeting. Fair housing standards. And then these all have to be signed, people. Quicker than quick.
Yeah, we need all signatures by Monday.
Right. So, and that doesn't give you all much time, because, um, town hall closes at quarter 12 tomorrow, and then at uh, 4:30, quarter five on Monday. So we really, really, really need to make an effort, all of you, to get up here and get these signed, please, please, please. All right, um, Karen, what do I need to do with these?
Well, has everybody had it, everybody, I sent them out for everyone to read. Um, and so I guess if Ann just moves, I mean, I, I can hear any changes from anybody, but if, if you just read, you know, the verbiage that you want as part of the report.
Read the whole paragraph.
Yeah.
On, all right. Um, the, this is planning board report to town meeting, Article 27, amend zoning bylaw for fair housing and affordability standards. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on February 11th, 2021, and continued until February 25, 2021, when the hearing was closed. On March 25, 2021, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 12th, 2021 annual town meeting. The changes to this article allow for the fair housing and affordability standards to be applied to more than five units in all districts with the requirement that land under common ownership for housing developments cannot be segmented to avoid this requirement. The town is providing a requirement for affordable housing for all developments with six or more units to increase affordable housing production in more areas of town and meet the priority local needs for affordable and diverse types of housing, while trying to meet the mandated 10% affordable housing goal as found in State Chapter 40B. The planning board supports this article. This article requires a two-thirds vote. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve this to go before town meeting.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Um, Mr. McLean, I'm not sure if you need to vote on this, because I do need your signature, so.
So vote.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right. So, all right, who wants to present this at town meeting? Don't everybody raise your hand at once?
What, what night is town meeting? Can you clarify again?
It's the 12th. It's a Monday night.
I can do it.
All right. Okay, Ben's gonna do that. Now we have the North Situate and Housekeeping zoning amendments. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on February 11th, 2021, and continued until February 25, 2021, when the hearing was closed. On March 25, 2021, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 12th, 2021 annual meeting. The changes to the zoning map and zoning bylaw will allow for development in North Situate area to follow new zoning that will replace the existing village business overlay district, business and commercial zones in the North Situate area. The new zoning has two sub-districts that will promote traditional development patterns and allow for mixed use, multifamily housing, quality open spaces, complete streets, and a vibrant pedestrian environment in the area. The zoning is based on the Green Bush Driftway Village Center and Neighborhood District and the North Situate Vision Plan, and included a series of public meetings that the Economic Development Commission and Planning Board held to receive public input. Existing zoning districts and overlay districts for water supply and environmental protection will be maintained. The zoning also incorporates provisions from Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. Minor housekeeping changes are included so that the zoning map correlates with the zoning bylaw. The planning board supports this article, and this article requires a two-thirds vote. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Mr. McLean? Mr. McLean?
I said aye.
Oh, sorry, gotcha. Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Okay, if you guys don't mind, I'll take this on at town meeting.
All right, can we, before we move on to the other report, um, does the board want to have the consultant present to do a presentation, or do you want just me to ask the consultant to give us an abbreviated, um, PowerPoint presentation, um, for town meeting? We're going to have two 24 by 36 maps of the area and 10 copies of the red line in marked up version, because the, obviously, we couldn't put the whole thing in the warrant.
What are your thoughts, people? Do you want the consultant?
How much, how much time will he have, you think?
I'm not sure. We find out, we should find out some of that on Monday, when we have to go to a me, when I, when Anna and I have to go to a meeting.
You know, we can hold off on whether or not to have the consultant, um, and we can do that on the 8th, because we'll know better the timeframe that we'll have.
I think we should do that.
Okay? All right. And then we have, last but not least, Article 26, the planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on February 11th, 2021, and closed on the same date on March 25th, 2021. The board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 12th, 2021 annual town meeting. The changes to the signed bylaw are a necessary legal adjustment to the bylaw to comply with current case law. Definitions prohibitive signs, temporary signs, and maintenance of signs has been added in addition to clarification for regulation of signs in residential and commercial districts. The planning board supports this article. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a second? Second? All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, Patty?
Yeah, do we know if advisory is taking this up yet?
Yes, they voted against it.
Okay. All right, that's all I wanted to know.
They voted against it?
Yes, they did.
Well, oh.
We don't know.
I don't, um, my understanding is, they, I'm not sure, they, they think maybe political signs are still part of it, and they're not really unsure. They're not sure. Um, I don't think they understand that the bylaw's unconstitutional, and they don't like the fact that your sign has to be 10 feet from the paved road. Um, where Anna and I have to go to the selectmen's meeting, which is a joint meeting with the advisory committee on Monday night, and hopefully we'll find out more, but that, that's my understanding. That's, that's why they voted against it.
Okay, I said aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Mr. McLean?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis? I can't hear Rebecca.
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
Okay. This, this one's gonna be contentious, and I don't mind being contentious on the floor of town meeting. So I'll take the signed bylaw, unless somebody else demands that they want to do it.
No.
No. All right.
Yeah, so, suggestion when you go to the town meeting, the only, um, committee that is not advertised and televised is the advisory board. And we need to see what's going on here, because that's where all the big decisions are made.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I don't know what's going to play with that.
Well, I also prepared talking points for all three, um, bylaws. Um, did anybody have any comments on them, or are you okay with just how they're, how they're written? Because they're meant for tools for, for you guys to be able to, um, present these articles.
Fine.
I thought they're all good.
They're excellent.
All right.
Okay. We have to vote to sign Street Acceptance bylaws and as built for Dear Common. Where is, where we go? Um, moved that the planning board recommend to the Board of Selectmen and the 2020 and 2021 special-
Oh, it should, it should be 2021 annual town, 2021 town meeting.
All right. 2021, um, town meeting that the Street of Dear Common Drive be laid out in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 82, Section 21 through 24, and be accepted by town meeting to become a public way in accordance with the layout plan stated September 24th, 2019, and to sign the Street Acceptance Plan and as-built plans. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Barbine?
Hi.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor. So this is something that you all need to come in and sign quickly, too. Um, we need to get this to the town clerk by, um, I'd say 1 o'clock at the latest on Monday.
Right, this has to be in the town clerk's office two weeks prior to town meeting, and two, Monday is two weeks.
Okay.
How, how early are you open tomorrow?
Um, I'll be here at 8:30. You would need me to get here earlier?
Uh, no.
I can't tomorrow.
You can text me if you need me to get here earlier. I can meet you.
No, 8:30 is fine, as long as you-
I'll be here at 8:30, yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, now we have to vote to endorse 18th Ford Place. I move that the planning board endorse the site plan administrator review special permit in the Green Bush Village Center and Neighborhood District plans for 18th Ford Place Situate Mass prepared by Grady Consulting LLC dated April 29, 2020, with revisions through 31721, and conditions needed for endorsement consisting of Sheets 1 through 7, 7A and 7B, Don McGill, applicant and owner, JV Situate LLC. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert?
Hi.
Mr. Bornstein?
Hi.
Mr. Pritchard?
Hi.
Ms. Lewis?
Hi.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Okay.
You're all set, Mr. McGill.
Thank you.
All right, now we have, we're a little late, and I apologize. We have a discussion at the Senior Center, 333 First Parish Road. I might also add that at one point, I've spoken with Recreation and Mara. Nancy was unable to be here this evening, but she said that she's working hand in hand with Linda Hayes, that all is going well, and she's very, very pleased with what's happening. So we're here to talk about parking monitoring plan, and first, so let's do that. And who's here to discuss that? Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm here to, to give you an update on the parking monitoring plan. I did confer with the town administrator, uh, to find out when the anticipated fully open operational timeframe would be. And, you know, a- as, as with anything on the pandemic, it's, it's not a set date, but he did not think it would be any, um, earlier than late summer or fall of this year. So I, I think it's sort of a moving target, um, and, and we're, we're ready to start whenever that occurs, but, that, that, that's the latest I got from, um, from the town administrator.
All right, but are you moving the, um, the help, the people that work for the Senior Center in? Are they there?
The Senior Center was occupied on, on, on the 4th by, by staff only.
So it's just the staff? No programs, nothing?
No.
Okay.
No. No, the contractor's doing punch list, and, uh, the staff is, is out of Brook Street and operating out of, out of the new building.
And you, so you're saying it'll be late summer before you start opening it up to the general, senior public, if you will?
It, it, it's all, it's all dependent on, uh, obviously, what, what the governor's guidance is, the CDC, and what the town decides to do for opening. Uh, Linda, you can probably add to that.
I, I might just want to interject, so, and, and again, per gym, in a few weeks, the Senior Center could be, um, open, sort of soft opening, so that people could come in. The doors don't need to be locked, sort of like town hall at the moment, but in terms of being able to do formal programming, we could probably do half-capacity for some of the rooms, but, they're actually not, since it's not completed altogether, yet there are some installations still going on. We are still waiting for some furniture. That may still wait through the month of April, maybe in May and June, we could start doing some programs in a limited capacity. We'll be able to use the outdoors. We'll have some patio furniture, so I think the building will start to be used, but in a very limited controlled fashion. Um, I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but in discussions with the Health Department, we do have some opportunities certainly for programming, but just not, not near fully operational. We'll be very-
But will you receive an occupancy permit? You're under a temporary occupancy permit right now. Will that be updated to a full-blown occupancy permit?
I don't know when that will occur.
We're gonna, we're gonna get the occupancy permit as soon as, as we can from Bob Vogel.
Okay.
I mean, the, the full.
So then it's just, it's COVID-dependent is what it is, more than anything else.
Well, you're gonna finish the site stuff before you get the full occupancy permit.
Correct, and- Correct, and, and the contractor's back. The weather's been good. They've, they've, they've been spreading along, getting ready to to finish up the plantings around the building. They're, they had a delivery due. So they're taking advantage of the warmer weather to, to finish up and, and fully demo.
Well, then can we ask for some type of report at the end of the summer? Or, or sooner if you go to full occupancy before that, so that we know when the parking monitoring will start?
Absolutely.
Yes. Sure.
All right.
Started before you're in full swing. But when you get there, then, you know, within a, a couple of weeks of that probably makes sense to start it. Because you, you get the full traffic impact.
Right.
Well, we'll be monitoring for six months from whenever we actually start.
I know, but don't want to start till you're fully open and fully.
But, but then you're saying you're going to be partially open. It's kind of a a double-edged sword here.
Well, the condition said full operation.
All right, full operation.
I, I think you wanted full operation because that, that'll give you the, all the, all the, the traffic and all the vehicles.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Before we move on, before we move on, do you know if a sign has been placed across the street on First Parish Road yet? I know prohibiting left turns.
I have not seen that.
There's, there's a, there's a sign on, 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 on the site.
I know, but it was once supposed to be placed across the street. It was discussed. It was discussed at the internal DRT meeting. They said they were going to do that because cars have been observed going left turn out of there.
Okay, so what's, what's the DRT meeting?
It's an internal meeting here. Can you follow up with the DPW?
Yes, I, I know Kevin Kelly may have mentioned that, that there was a discussion of doing that, but I, I did not have any kind of information as to when. But we'll follow up with that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. As far as, let's see, programming of events, we, this isn't going to happen right away, correct, Linda?
Well, I think, I think we'll start to work with the recreation department e- even immediately, especially as we near summer and they will be doing their programming as they did last summer as well with their youth. So knowing that that's a peak time and a busy time for them, it'll be good to get acquainted with that. But as Mara indicated when you spoke to her, we've already talked about the different things we propose to do, regular meetings naturally. And, and we've always wanted to create some synergy between the departments anyway and, and hope to use, and especially this year, the outdoor space and create some opportunities independently and together for some of the space around the buildings. And obviously want to make our parking areas available, available to the other uses evenings and weekends and just try to support each other generally with what we have available for resources. In addition to just meeting and discussing and sharing our planning, so to speak, I've talked to Mike Mincello, the IT Director, and we can create some shared outlook calendars, which we use anyway to put our regular activities and events in so that recreation staff could see our calendar and we theirs. We could also even propose a shared calendar, much like they do for the maritime school or the Harbor Community Building, which we have always sort of submitted to before, so we check to see what else might be going on, who else might be using it before we make any plans and any requests to use it. Much like Kevin Devon on the recreation staff does now, there's permitting required when you want to use the field or the gym, so we can foresee that really even in our building or theirs or the grounds themselves, we could go through some sort of process like that as well, so everybody knows. And we could also use an email distribution list, so to speak, so that when certain things are added to calendars, the designated group list would receive an alert or a notification by email generally that, that things have changed, and so they would be aware of of those things, especially if we create kind of the combined list that might really serve us more for the off-hours, for the evenings and weekends, which we would be more likely to have to really coordinate besides the use of the building site for regular daytime use at the senior center and for recreations, regular uses. They do a quarterly seasonal brochure, so we'll have that and we'll sort of be part of, they'll make us aware of that as they complete it. And we do a bi-monthly newsletter, so we'll share those plans as well prior to the publication of that, of that item. So I guess discussing the combined calendar, I think the online scheduling, if we are doing any evening meetings, if the senior center is doing, you know, an extended day exercise or activity or some sort of monthly activity, then that would be something that we coordinate as well with the recreation department, especially during their times when they have basketball or something else going on in the building regularly.
Linda, thank you. Is that it? All right, Karen, do you have anything for?
The, how's it working with the, with the food bank people?
Well, it's working great. They're not there yet. No, they're not there yet. They anticipate April 1.
Oh, April.
April 1, yeah.
Okay.
But it's being prepared for them, at least outside.
And that's something else that has to be thrown into the mix that, and, you know, Linda and Mara have been considering that.
Yep, well, it'll be picked up in this, in the study too, right, in the parking monitoring plan, once it goes forward.
It should be, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other comments from the board?
Well, can I just talk about the parking lot in general right now? Um, I'm, I'm, I have some concern about the, the wattage of the lights. I have reason to go down First Parish Road almost every evening for the last two weeks. And I looked at the plan and the lights in the middle of the parking lot are at 142 watts. I can see them all the way at Ronnie Show's store. They seem to be excessively bright and the building is not even open. The other place where it's really bright is around the portico, which I understand when you're open. But right now there's nobody there and the only people who are taking advantage of that right now are skateboarders who know that there's an empty parking lot with lights on. Another attractive nuisance, attractive nuisance for kids to go to, so. Uh, but, but they are very, very bright, as I had said all, all along. So can Mr. Kirby respond to that?
I can. Right now, the, the lights are set to, to go on, both the, the parking light poles and the building lights are set to go on at 6:00 and they go off at 9:00 o'clock. The, we, this past Friday, the designer and myself and a, a lighting consultant went down to the site to do a foot candle measurement of the lighting in comparison to the photo metrics that, that had been issued as part of the design. The parking lot lights are all within the the measurements that were on the photo metrics. The one area that we have that's, that's was higher is at the main entry, the, the front, the front door to the senior center. That, that area has both wall sconces, which, which you need to have a light at each entry door, and it has the recess fixtures that are up in the ceiling, up the porch. What we are, we are looking into is reducing the wattage on the, the wall sconce lights, at least on that, on the west side, because of the, of the the issue with shining into the neighbors windows. We, we do have to have lighting, but it, it, that, that area is bright. So that's something that, that we can do. We're also going to check with the, a police chief to make sure that, how that building is when everything goes off, because when the lights go off, they all go off. We want to make sure with him whether he's, he's okay with that and from the security of the building and the site aspect, because we do have cameras on the building, but it, it may be tough to see what's going on if, if there's no light. So we're, we're, we're looking into that a little bit also.
I thought you were supposed to have a motion sensor on those lights.
The, the light poles are supposed to, after 9:00 o'clock, the lights was, are supposed to be activated with a motion sensor and come on at a reduced illumination. That, that is being reviewed by the engineer and, and the lighting designer. It's, it's not operational yet. It's not installed yet. But that was also part of the discussion as to getting that operational course. That will, that will mean if, you know, if someone drives into the, the parking lot, all the lights will go on. On, on, on the light poles, not on the building. It's, it's the light poles that are, are supposed to be motion.
You mean one motion sensor would set off all of the parking lot lights? Aren't they individually motion sensor?
No, they, they would, they would come on as a, they're, they're, they're tied in as a zone. I think there, I believe there's two zones, is the, the zone on the west side of the property and then the remaining that's center and on the east side along where the, the B-Wing School is.
Hmm.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
So I just want to know that we will hear something else about the lights at some point, whether they're going to water it off or reduce wattage or whatnot.
Yes, yeah, I can, I can report back on that. No problem.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Karen, anything else?
No, that was what we had asked them to come in and talk to us about tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we have one hand raised. Public comment.
Hi, um, yes, I did want to mention that the
Can you just please identify your save?
Susanna Green, 337 First Parish Road. I did want to mention, I know that Steve went out and looked at the lights. The perimeter lights aren't the issue. It's the double lights in the center of the parking lot that are exceedingly bright. They're shining into everybody's homes. I mean, it's obnoxious. Nobody's come over here from the, the OPM to, you know, actually see what it's like. My neighbor's yard is lit up like a Christmas tree. You know, they shine into the living rooms, they shine into the bedrooms. I mean, I don't care if they shut off at 9:00. I mean, we're sitting here and the lights are shining in. You've got seniors in the back that are complaining. My neigh, my other neighbors, a butters to us, they can see them from their house. And same as what Patty said, I came home the other night and I could see them all the way at Shones while I was sitting at the light. I mean, there, there's really no need for them to be that bright. You've got lights shining on grass in the back. There's no parking back there. You know, we're not arguing that you need parking lot lights. It's just there's no need for them to be that bright.
Okay, Mr. Kirby, you will take that, that all under advisement? And I understand that Karen has forwarded you every single email that she has received concerning these lights and hopefully you will be able to resolve the brightness of those center lights.
I can report back, yeah, absolutely.
Please, work, work on that, please, sir, okay? We're all neighbors and we all have to get along, all right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, people. All right, now we're moving on to Zero Beaver Dam Road, wherever that is.
Backside.
Next. Okay, who is Zero Beaver Dam Road?
This is Greg Morse, Morse Engineering.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, this is Greg Morse, Morse Engineering. I'm a registered engineer working for the property owner, William Scanlon, Lisa Morrissey. This is a Form A application to divide assessors parcel 45-16-23A, which is a which is a landlocked piece of land with zero frontage. It's located in the R3 zoning district. The proposal here is to take this property, which is a little over 65,000 square feet, it's all upland, into divided into two parcels. Parcel 1 would be 31,864 square feet and would be conveyed to an abutter. Parcel 2 being 32,562 square feet would remain the property of the applicant. Neither parcel is a buildable lot. General note 10 on the plan, as well as the parcel identifiers on the plan state that these parcels have no frontage to them. These properties are registered with the, I'm sorry, recorded with the Registry of Deeds, and we feel that they're entitled, entitled to 81 endorsement. If you look at Chapter 41, 81P, it states the A and R endorsement shall not be withheld unless such a plan shows a subdivision. Section 81L specifically defines what a subdivision is. A subdivision is the division of a tract of land into two or more lots. What we're proposing here, these are not lots, these are unbuildable parcels. We've stated such on the plan and we feel that the plan is entitled to endorsement.
Karen?
Um, I theoretically, I agree with Mr. Morse. I'm just going to point out to the board that all the requirements in your regulations have not been met with this plan, but I ultimately think this is an endorseable plan.
How does that square?
Excuse me?
How, how does that square? If all the requirements haven't been met, then how is it endorseable?
Um, you know, it doesn't show setback lines. It doesn't show, I mean, it doesn't show the whole lot. It doesn't show where you get, where the frontage for the lot is on Poplar Street. I understand that this is a rare unbuildable lot. But it's, you know, it's it's, it's more on the minor side.
Any further comments? All right. I moved to endorse this approval not required, a plan of land in Situate Mass showing a division of assessors parcel 45-16-23A stamped by Douglas L. Alberg, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc. For applicant owner William P. Scanlon and Lisa Morrissey dated January 12, 2021. As the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw. Planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination of conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Ms. Burbine? Lampert?
Aye.
Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
All right, our next and final is Five Clap Road. And who is the individual on this one?
Again, Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering.
Well, this one's, I think, very straightforward. It's just sort of kind of a shame that that beautiful property is being divided. It's kind of sad, but that's the way it goes, right? Would you tell us what you're doing? Thank you, Greg.
Sure. So again, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, representing the property owners, James and Lori Hall. This property is located at Five Clap Road. It's located in the R1 zoning district. The proposal here is to take the property and divide it into two lots. Lot 1 having 5, 56,558 square feet and 344 feet of frontage containing the existing home. Lot 2 being 48,198 square feet with 175 feet of frontage. Both lots conform with the frontage and area requirements for zoning and the plan's entitled to endorsement.
Karen?
The plan is endorseable. It may require a scenic road hearing because there's a stone wall that goes along the whole frontage of it, of the property. Some of it is in the public right of way. Some of it is on private property, so it just depends on where a future driveway is going to be. And I'm just going to comment, again, it's very unfortunate, the, the lot shape of the lot. The remaining lot 1, it's very confusing. the, the lot shape of the lot, the remaining Lot 1, it's very confusing what, where Lot 1 ultimately is going to be, potentially confusing for future property owners.
It is proposed to have the lot line with concrete boundary markers staked, as required in your regulations, so we don't believe it'll be confusing at all where the location is.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? I move to endorse this approval not required, a plan of land showing a division of Five Clap Road, Assessor's parcel 25-4-1, Situate Mass, stamped by Douglas L. Alberg, PLS of Morse Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner James and Laurie Hall, as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the, by, required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Clap Road, Grove Street. Planning board, endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to the conformance with zoning regulations. Is there a second? Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert? Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you.
All right, Karen, do you want to finish up planning and development?
I think I did, I mean, I think I gave you the two-minute version of that, so.
We're done.
Good. Unless you have any questions on anything I said, I mean.
No? Does anybody have anything they want to add or chat about? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Ms. Burbine?
Aye.
Ms. Lampert? Mr. Bornstein?
Aye.
Mr. Pritchard?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you, people, we'll see you again on the 8th, if not sooner, don't forget to come in and sign this stuff, it's so important, please, 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 please.
Now, it'll be 8:00 tomorrow morning.
All right, Seth, it's always a pleasure.
Always great to see you, Ms. Burbine.
Thank you very much, thank you.